Yeah.
Looks like it's raining on.
Saturday, Saturday, Saturday.
I got a face for radio.
We had so much.
We had like six groups.
All right.
Well, you.
Got time to see Jim line up a rub?
Yeah.
Family.
What's that?
How you doing?
And they're all coming at the same time.
Oh.
And I was Jay Rodsaw. Well, at seven o'clock, a call this meeting to order. Please stand and against the flag. You said the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to accept it as printed.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to accept it as printed.
Ted Johnson.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Done and then.
Oh, the other one? Sorry.
Hearing none, call for the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Then opposed, same signal. Same sign. Motion carried unanimously. Uh, we have the minutes of our last meeting, late two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting. Uh, I'm assuming everybody has had a chance to look at those.
Make the motion to accept the minutes from April eighth, that's written.
On second.
Motion by Barb. Seconded by Dale. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion cap here. Okay, public comment for items on the agenda. Everybody, I think there were copies of the agenda back there, hopefully everybody's picked one up. Uh, are there any? Any comment at this point? Okay. Hearing none, we'll get right on to the business items. Uh, review the requirements for all dwellings and accessory bu- building regulations. Uh, Kevin has prepared memo on that and then supporting documents. Turn it over to Kevin for a minute, just kind of go through it real quickly, uh.
So yeah, there were a few different changes since your last meeting. Um, um, I'm looking at the edits version of the proposed amendment. On page two. Uh, we have removed the language regarding an attached accessory building, only be allowed fifteen feet close to the road. So the change there would be, it's attached and attached garage, it could be, it just have to meet the principal setback. Cause we have to be behind the rest of the dwelling. On page three, under height, there has been an addition that would exempt or bona fide agricultural operation from the maximum side wall height, but would still keep the maximum height to thirty-five feet. And then also under height for an attached accessory building, um, some changes so that it can be at least sixteen foot tall per side wall height. Or the same side wall height as the principal building, whichever is greater. That way if you have an attached garage, um, kind of one-story building, the attached garage could still be sixteen foot high. And then the other item, uh, was the review of the table, so the number of accessory buildings and the size of maximum combined square footage. And then one item, um, that I did forget to address was around Mr. Badger's comments around the two front roads.
Yes.
Um, so that would be something that would need some, uh, further clarification from the planning commission tonight too. Um, if, um, you'd like to see language put back into this zoning ordinance amendment to allow for, so with Mr. Badger's, um, circumstance, he's on a through lot, so he's got a, a road on the north and a road on the south. So his billable area for an accessory building is really small.
Hmm.
Um, we could add language that says, you know, in the case where, um, you know, a lot is a through lot, you know, it will be the zoning administrator's determination based on the driveway where the front road is for an accessory building.
Which would make sense.
Right.
Wherever their main driveway, make that their front and the other ones their back.
Wouldn't it just be their address? Yeah, the driveway, I might be like.
Isn't that where your driveway is, is where your address is?
Right.
Yeah, usually.
Usually.
Usually, but nothing.
Nothing's in concrete, yes, I know.
Yeah, so I mean, it would just, I'd need to have some clear way to say, yes, this is your front road and, uh, front yard in this case, and then you can build back here. So if there was a driveway, hesitate to the front door of the house, cause that can get changed in a lot of different ways, but
Turned, mhm.
I think it would be my recommendation would be if you're good with having the driveway be the front yard and a through lot and down the rear yard being a not directly section.
I think that makes sense.
Seems to be. What's the, um, what's our backyard, so back?
For an accessory building, it would be, uh, ten feet. And we could say that for a through lot, it has to meet the, the principal setback, which was letting it more thirty-five feet in those cases.
That makes a little more sense.
That makes more sense to me.
I have a question for you, if you have a corner lot, huh? Like my house is on Bonn off and eleven mile, could I change my address to eleven mile instead of Bonn?
For a corner lot, that's already defined within the zoning ordinance that you have two front yards and two rear yards. But you'd be in a much different situation for an accessory building, cause
Yeah.
The situation for that case is that now, you can't have an accessory building in the front yard or where you can rear yard.
But what he's asking is could he change his address from eleven mile road or from Bonn off to eleven mile road?
Yeah. Bonn off.
That would be a conversation for, I don't know, I can't remember who sets addresses in Kent County, but.
Postal.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, that's a postal, that's not.
Those are usually, usually it's either county dispatch, um, you, a lot of times it's working with county dispatch or the road commission to set, um, the addresses.
It's a road commission.
I know when I was looking to build and they were the ones who determined what, I had to call them.
Right, they assign you.
And tell them where, and they said, we'll drop the culvert here.
Yeah.
And there was the house to my left and the house to the right, and I got to pick a number in between the two. And that's how they determine my address, so.
Address. Whatever.
Yeah, either even side the road, yeah, right.
Whatever, whatever you are.
Yeah.
So we want to add that language then to this document?
So what I'll do is I'll add a definition for a through lot to include with this, then there's a, a definition. And then we'll also add terminology or regulations within the accessory building section that says for a through lot, you know, rear yard is this, and you have to meet the rear yard setback to the zoning district. Otherwise you can build opposite of your driveway.
What do you, any agreement on that?
No, I think the address is a good definition for that, quite frankly, right? I mean, that truly sets the stage and then the driveway is not a manipulation.
Cause depending on the culvert, they could have a driveway coming in both sides.
So yeah, so whatever, whatever road your address is on.
Addresses on.
Yeah.
That makes no sense to me. Might have two covers, but they won't have two addresses, so.
That's true.
The only time you're gonna get bad is if you're on a corner lot. Where you'd have the choice of which road or through lot. But I think the way that the corner lot states, you have two front yards and then you determine which one is your rear yard and which one is your side yard. I'm, I believe that's what the, what the, the zoning ordinance says.
Did you give the, give your, your Mr. Badger?
Yeah, yeah, I'm Mr. Badger.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So you gotta add that then, all right, yeah. Anything else, uh?
I mean, the biggest piece I've been looking at for feedback from the planning commission is just making sure that the number and the size of accessory buildings match what you want, obviously it tells a few of your concerns, but I think that was the biggest item that I was all standing from the last meeting.
So on the graphical page, did you supply this, Kevin, that, that'll show this square footage?
Yeah, so yeah, within the memo, there were a couple of different screenshots where we tried to show the potential impact of the proposed sizes.
Right. Don't you have anything to add?
Don't tell my husband, he's gonna want a larger one.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is Bill Brown, four five five seven, Tom Iro. Just before you go any farther and vote on this, could you, we don't have the paperwork, tell us what sizes that you're voting on that's in front of you.
Well, what, what we'll do tonight is if, if we feel comfortable with it, then we'll schedule it for a public hearing, at which time it will be posted. And every, you should have the, the whole language. Your lot is, what size is your lot?
Point seven.
So combined square footage of all accessory buildings would be twenty-eight hundred square feet, so.
Trying to cut to the fly.
All right, so is everybody satisfied with this then?
With the addition of what he's going to do.
Right. Addition, so. We need a motion then to set the wheels in motion to.
If you wanted to make a motion to schedule for a public hearing with the addition of the definition of through a lot.
Right.
I'll make the motion what he said. I'll second it.
We have a motion to set this then for a public hearing with the addition of the through lot, your language. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right. Next item. Review of the planning commission bylaws. Dale, were these the original by, bylaws that we've just kind of?
Yeah, I think so.
Just reinstate, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I, 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 I read through them and I hadn't read through them in a while, but then I looked at the date, it was September twenty-second of two thousand twenty. I think that time, at that time, we just, we didn't have any corrections or we just.
Yeah, I think it go back quite a ways.
Yeah. So, but I don't think you made any changes to them correctly.
No, that's what I was given when I started with Sparta, so.
Okay. Anybody have any comments on those? They're pretty thorough.
Did Barb's, are Barb's comments in here already?
No.
Yeah, she, there, the memo said Barb had things to add.
Yeah, so I think that was one of the, the things that came up was, uh, four H with the agenda. Uh, within your bylaws, it says enough, here's how the, the agenda goes out. I think we've made some changes over the years to how that's set up, so that might be one place to change them, just to reflect how your agenda's currently done. Um, but I know that Barb and some other members of the township had attended the Michigan Townships Association Meeting manual conference, and it sounds like you guys had had some different feedback from some of those, um, sessions, but yeah.
It was, yeah, they basically said to keep to keep order when you're having meetings, definitely, you know, when they do their comments, it's comments. It's not something that we're gonna answer, it's not something that we're gonna get into. They can make their comments, we'll make notes on them, and then we can get back to them, if they'd like to discuss it further, they should come into the office. Cause it saves time, plus it prevents confrontations.
So do you feel that's reflected in here then?
Pardon me?
Do you feel that that is reflected in these now?
I think that it needs, something like that needs to be possibly added in.
Oh, okay.
So that it's reflected in that going forward, it would be something that probably we should add in there regarding commenting. It also prevents you from lawsuits. Cause otherwise you can be quoted as saying something that perhaps at the time was taken out of context or bespoke.
I know, yeah. I know in my years with the state, when we had a public hearing, we would put together a response in writing and mail it out to anybody that wanted it.
Mhm.
I mean, if they were simple little questions, you know, we'd answer them, but if they were complex or they seem to get out of hand, then we would, we would deal with it that, that way, you know, and that, and that worked.
And I, I've seen it handled a few different ways, um, so for like special land uses, when there's a, a public hearing, sometimes you know, members of the public won't always have, had a chance to come in, review site plans and do all those things. So I've seen where the planning commission, you know, reviews the comments, and then once the comments are received after that, it gets closed. You know, they'll venture the applicant, say, hey, can you address, you know, we've got these comments and concerns, can you address those concerns? If the applicant's not able to address all of them, sometimes they'll turn to myself or maybe other township staff. Um, how you guys wanna run your meetings, by all means, how you wanna, I'm here to, you know, assist you. Um, but I have found that sometimes during those public comment periods, that there's not necessarily a comment and response in the back and forth. Um, sometimes the meetings do proceed in a more orderly fashion.
Do you have any proposal language for incorporate that, type of concept into our bylaws?
I can come up with some draft language to bring back to the planning commission, uh, I think right now, I'd say make sure I'm clear on the updates I'm making, update the agenda so that it matches the current agenda. So the outline, the outline of the bylaws, match your current agenda outline. And then also bringing some proposals, trying to kind of match the, how that process proceeds.
Okay. We'll have that for our next meeting now, I take it?
Yes.
Anybody else have any other comments or concerns? Reading your comments the next time. All right. Uh, next item, review the planning commission work list.
So if this one, as the planning commission knows, match plans currently off to legal counsel for review. Um, that'll be either a month or two before that's complete and brought back to the planning commission. And then with what seems like the accessory building, uh, far and medium conversation coming to a close. I wonder if there's any other items that you guys wanted to start working on, um, or just get some direction on what may be the next thing you'd like to review?
How about that sliding scale? The first one you got listed?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the last time the, the planning commission talked about that, uh, I can't remember, it's been a few months or so. Um, I think the last direction I had was that you guys wanted to get through the master plan and then
Okay.
come back to it, but
Okay.
it's definitely something that we can start looking at more if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay, I agree, I think it's something that we should start.
Yeah, I know that was quite a controversial issue before, so it's gonna take some, probably take some time to, to settle in on that one, so. Maybe we ought to start looking at that.
So yeah, I can bring some, I can start preparing some items for the planning commission to start reviewing at your next meeting, I don't know if that'll have a much of a memo, but at least, hey, here's all the provisions and kind of bring all the relevant pieces to you guys to review.
Sounds good. So any other priorities, anybody have any?
What's the Sparta hunting and fishing club?
Twelve.
It's been a while since I've looked at that, so with Sparta hunting and fishing club. That it's legally non-conforming use. I believe it's not necessarily identified as used within the Ag two district. So that might be something for the planning, it's not, I'd say it's not a burning issue, they haven't asked to expand. Um, I think I've had one complaint in the last few years where there was a neighbor that didn't like all the noise, but they're, they're currently operating, there's no violations, there's no, been no issues, they haven't asked to expand, but it could be something to look at in the future to say, hey, you know, this is gonna be in the future, it's either used by right in the Ag two or a special land use, and then if it's a special land use, you know, what might be the rules? If they did want to expand in the future, or if another hunting and fishing club wanted to come to the area.
What does item five, Kevin, pertain to the outdoor gathering amendment? Is there any question on that, or?
So with outdoor gatherings, um, I think there's a, there, a couple pieces there of just, right now, it's, it's five hundred people, um, and that there have been issues, you know, maybe just, just reviewing it, making sure that it's where you want it to be, and that it's something that would be able to be enforced, that's the concern that's in the back of my mind. Um, that if they need a permit, just taking a look at it to make sure it still matches the intent and purpose.
I guess with summer season coming up, a lot of defense or property planned, but you know, at this time of year, when you start seeing a lot more and more outdoor gathering situations.
All right, are there like the solar provisions, review bonding requirements, is that just something that we should update? Cause I, I know we, we have, we have bonding requirements, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, so that conversation came up when there was a review, um, for a farm that was putting in a ground mounted solar because of their size. Uh, Sparta has level one, level two, and I can't remember if it's level three, but there's essentially three levels, level one. Um, it's just, it's a smaller ground mounted system, there's less requirements, but then when you get to level two, um, that requires review by the planning commission, and then it does require a bond to be in place. So I think that was my impression from that conversation is that, you know, it was however many years ago, and you did that, and the intent is, you know, now you've got a farmer that's right in the middle of their property, and that that bond might not be needed for those types of solar in the future. That was the intent was, I think, to review it and then either remove those requirements or, uh, change them so that it better matches what you guys want.
All right, anything else?
Did the gentleman, um, Sparta have any way regarding the kennel, did that, did he ever resolve any of that, or is?
It's a llama farm now.
A llama farm, okay, from llamas, from dogs to llamas, okay.
Well, that might be something that if you, you still wanted to review, I, you know, right now it's a special land use in Ag two, but it's not allowed in
There you go.
Ag one, um. If it is something where you wanted to allow kennels in Ag one, or if it's somewhere that just doesn't need to be on the worklist anymore, I mean, you can remove it also.
Currently, it's only allowed in Ag two, and personally, I think that's I don't know why you'd want it in Ag one. Uh, it's, that doesn't make any sense to me.
That's dumb, bro, from.
Yeah. Personally, I'd say.
In my case, they're right next to each other.
Pardon me?
In my current situation, I'm right, there, there's Ag one and Ag two right next to each other.
Right, but.
I don't know where it would.
Where it would shift.
Yeah.
Do we leave it on, take it off?
I think take it off, yeah.
If there's not any request, take it off.
Take it off.
I mean, I guess there, there has been some hot topics in other communities about short-term rentals and
Yeah.
I, I guess I don't know what our stature is on that at all. Do we have a ordinance or a policy on that?
Yeah, so when it comes to short-term rentals, a lot of it's gonna come down to the definitions, they have zoning ordinance. Um, with Sparta's zoning ordinance, the way that motels and hotels are fined, does cover short-term rents. Um, so that's the way we treat it so far, is that if you wanna short-term rental, a motel or hotel, then that is only in the commercial district. If it is something where the township did want to allow short-term rentals, then we would have to look through potentially creating a new definition and then creating the rules that would allow or regulate them.
We're talking like Airbnb's and Verbal.
I have had two, um, since I've been in Sparta, one was when I first came here, um, the previous zoning administrator had to issue a citation, they were running one without a permit. Uh, they shut it down, and they ended up selling the property. And then the other one was more recent, where somebody had built, um, kind of a cabin out in the woods. They didn't have the permit for that cabin, um, but then they were renting it out as a short-term rental also. They ended up, as soon as I contacted them, they were really good to work with, they shut down the, the site, and then they did remove the cabin. Um, so I haven't seen a lot of issues where people are demanding them, but obviously there has been at least a couple people that have tried.
Just as a side note, from a long-term vision standpoint, Stony Ridge has had considerations of such um, for the winery. Um, there again, we don't have any plans in the, in place or don't have any intentions currently, but as the future moves forward, you know, I think that kind of falls in with the agribusiness that the whole ridge has to offer. Um, because we do get a big influx of people in the fall time. So I, I don't know, from, from my interest, I, I think it might be something that, that I'd like CS to review, if everybody else is in agreement with that.
So you'd like the. Okay.
Um, you know, get something established prior to
Prior to.
Deleting it.
Yeah, it's been in the news quite a bit, you know, about short-term rentals, maybe.
Well, wouldn't bed and breakfast and short-term rentals be the same thing?
Not necessarily, so right now the township does allow bed and breakfast, um.
Didn't see one on there, right?
It's, oh goodness, I think actually what happened is, um, it's only allowed in, and Dale, you might know this more off the top, you had better than I do, but I believe it's only allowed in Ag two or Ag one.
I think it's Ag one that's a special use.
Mm-hmm.
This says in C one.
And so that was kind of one of the issues that I think had, had come up, is that, uh, I believe it was during the time of, uh, prior Barnes's approval. As a part of their conditional rezoning, there was also an amendment that was going through the township that then allowed bed and breakfast as a special land use within C one, and then somewhere along the way, whether it was during the restatement or somewhere period, that amendment didn't make it into the current zoning ordinance. So for prior Barnes, um, and they've been having a lot of conversations with the township and just what they're looking at long-term, to bring them back into closer, um, conformance with zoning ordinance with essentially, again, allowing bed and breakfast in the C one district again.
Are they C one?
They are conditionally, they're the conditional C one, I believe.
Hmm, okay.
I would like to see that happen, just for my own personal benefit, but I guess you could say that it, I mean, bed and breakfast in C one. Cause I get this fantastic lot for one, it's way high up, you know? Now, it'd be beautiful, it's a beautiful building, it's fine, but but you know, it would be cool, I would. Now, it'd be beautiful, it's a beautiful building, it's fine, but, but you know, it would be cool, I wouldn't run it myself.
I was gonna say, you're gonna start doing business there now?
Oh, there you go.
How better, you're making records.
But I don't think it'd be too much.
I mean, both of those kind of follow in the same vein, really.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, and the one thing we do with the sports park, and I've just.
There you go.
Realized this is really getting a lot of traffic.
Yeah, what do you think?
Somebody that built that parking lot big enough. But I mean, you know, going hand in hand with that, I think both Airbnb's and the, and the bed and breakfast would be a. Considering thing for us to look at and get in front of it instead of getting run over by.
I've heard lately from a lot of wedding venues in the area where they're being asked if there's a place. That so the, the wedding couple can at least spend the night, so they're not traveling from there to someplace else after the event. There's a new Casanova barn coming too.
So.
We should leave that.
We definitely got on.
Yeah, I would, I would think that would be a good.
Or outdoor gatherings, maybe those three.
I mean, I think the sliding scale has been a pointed issue for some time, so I still think that should be at the forefront.
I agree.
Yeah, that's where I'll, I'll seek some, um, guidance on how to prioritize the thing, uh, everything. I'll tell you, I'll get nervous if we're gonna dig into sliding scale. I mean, that's been my experience for most of my communities, is when you start talking about those sorts of things in the Ag district, it tends to be a lot of conversations, a lot of work. Um, so if you were gonna try to tackle that, and, uh, it might be a lot.
Okay.
Um. So I, yeah, just whatever you guys wanna tackle first, but I would prefer not to try to tackle sliding scale, and.
Okay.
Um, but however you order, if you wanna do bed and breakfast and short-term rentals and outdoor gatherings, that might be something that might be.
Goes together, you know?
Put those three together and then go to sliding scale, I was asking.
Yeah. Well, that's good to me. I mean, your past experiences, Kevin, has, uh, has those three been complicated to address in other townships?
Bed and breakfast, I don't expect to be too much of an issue. Uh, outdoor gatherings, um. I think there'll be some things to work with, my gut is that, you know, there might be some conversations, but I don't expect that to be a huge one. Short-term rentals could definitely, you know, that's how you did, just if, depending on how you approach it. I know with one of our communities, they've been working through it for a while now, as part of that, they did a community survey, just, just to gauge the community's interest. Um. That could be, I've seen it go both ways, where it's really non-controversial or very controversial.
I would think that that one would be a, a, a very pointed conversation, if we have a lot of lakes in the township, right? And I, what do we have, Camp Lake? I think that's the only.
I'm sure there are short-term rentals on these lakes.
Um, I, I would.
I would dare to say, I, I'm sure there are, so.
I could also see it, well, with properties along the Rogue River becoming very popular for short-term rentals also.
So we're gonna put those three to tackle those three, and one is one, or at one time?
Yeah, I mean, if.
At least get something going on.
Yeah, I think we can definitely get something rolling, and then that could also be where you guys get to a point to where. It ends up being too much for all at once, you can say, okay, we're gonna pause on this one and keep moving.
Right. Sounds good.
Where can I get good information on the sliding scale topic, though, I mean, I, I'm not that familiar with it.
I, I think we had talked about it a while, I'm trying to look through my files, I might be able to resend something back out to the planning commission.
That would be helpful for me, not anyone else, just to, I mean, I know Mr. Stephens has got a very.
I thought he was probably here for that.
I know he has a very huge interest in that. He's been poking us for a while.
Well, Dale, you wrote something up as well about the sliding scale a few years ago, right?
Uh, it may have, one thing, as of late, the health department is really strict. On their approval of drain fields. I don't think you're gonna have many lots out to Ag one to perk. And they're mostly having, requiring above ground. I mean, you really gotta do well to, to meet the above, above ground standards, I guess Ken Simons had a lot, he tried to perk it, wouldn't it perk? Had a three point five acre. So that's gotta be a limiting factor anyway, but.
I've got eighteen, and it wouldn't perk.
Yeah, it's an awful lot that won't perk, no, you know?
Munch cobras didn't perk either.
Yeah.
I'll be meeting with a property owner tomorrow that had that issue, that they dug holes all up and down their property. And had struggled to find it in one of their Ag properties. It looks like there was a memo, uh, from like early last year. Um, I'll look at that and try to resend some of that information back out to the planning commission, so it's easily at hand. Um, and then I'll, I'll start to get to work on some of the other stuff for, uh, bed and breakfast, short-term rentals and outdoor gatherings too.
Sounds good.
Have you had inquiries regarding fence sites?
So, that one came up in particular, there haven't been a lot of issues, um. So this is where I wanna be careful, is there's only been one problem that I've had in the last three years that I've been here. Uh, but it was starting to get out of hand between a couple of neighbors.
Okay.
So right now, um. I think I kinda got it, put in a place where it's like, okay, everybody just, let's just calm down, let's not start putting barbed wire on our fences, uh, that's not needed. Um, but there's just no maximum fence height requirements in the township, so if somebody came to me and said, hey, I wanna put up a twenty-foot fence in. The R one district, I don't know that I'd be able to tell him no, from a zoning perspective.
I was gonna say, maybe Rob was missing when you were talking about the sliding scale.
Yeah, we were discussing.
Yeah, but that's his.
You walked out of the room.
We are, sorry, we already passed that, hey, it was an auction, but I got it, so.
Outside of the backyard, wow.
How's the, uh, old Handler property out there, like Camp Lake? That, ever, did they ever finalize purchase of that, do you know? They were the four brothers, I think they were.
Yeah, we, we ended up wrapping all of it up, there's still, um. My understanding is there's still the one property where most of the junk's been collected, that, that hasn't completely, completely been finalized. But otherwise, yeah, we got through that, uh, conditional rezoning. And then, I know there's been some inquiries about the, the Ag two properties, um. Whether or not they'll build homes on there, I think there's just con, some concerns about what may have been done on the properties.
There's stuff in the back.
If somebody wants to buy those and take liability for.
Clean up.
What may have been done previously, so there hasn't been much actions on that since it was last before the planning commission.
I hadn't heard anything lately on it, I just wondered.
Yeah.
Are you all done, done?
Pardon?
Are you all done, done, did I just the whole thing then? No, no, we, we were just going through our, our, our list of issues that we've gotta deal with, and sliding scale was one of them.
Okay.
We're gonna do that separate.
We're gonna, we're gonna, yeah.
And we'll leave your expertise.
Where it was left, is Kevin's gonna get us information to review, so we can refresh our.
See where we're at and then. All right, is there any other public comment, uh, on items that were not on the agenda?
I have a question about one on the agenda.
Okay.
The, uh, just the Barnum Mini ordinance, just, um, what's the timeline now with where things are at, just so I could give my client an update on. How it's progressing, I mean, it's progressing well, um, I'm just asking, uh.
I'll ask Kevin, yeah. After that question, where are we at with the Barnum Mini?
Uh, after tonight's meeting, we'll schedule for public hearing, we should have time to get to the paper and time for the next meeting. From there, planning commission has your hearing on it, then you'll make a recommendation to the board. So June, likely it would go to the board in July, pending, as long as you don't make any changes, and then if the board decides to adopt it. It could probably become effective sometime late July.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Yes.
Gold round, four, five, five, seven, ten mile road. Uh, just a couple things, when you start thinking about what you brought up on your worklist, the outdoor venue. Where it sounded like right now you got a cap for don't matter what venue it was, you might want to see how much. Footage acreage or whatever the venue is on, for parking and amount of people, so some might be able to go a little bigger, like some of these wedding venues. If they need to, if they got the property to hold it, so that's just one comment. And then on your short-term rental, it sounds like everyone's on board, just like me, I've used them all over the country. I was in Ireland, and it had the old farmhouse, one horse on a fence, and you were right alongside the horse fence. And as long as they're maintained with whatever bylaws you gotta put, so people respect neighbors and the land, I think they're a great thing. And I think we're progressing well on everything else, so that's just, I just wanted, while we start things, just a few things to think about. Like you say, a lot of you got land you would like to do it, and when you're traveling. It's just like you said, when they come out here for Blair Barnes, they don't wanna have to drive back downtown. They wanna find something close for, and for the bride and groom, like you said, my daughter did that in Italy. The venue they had, they had a little hut there that they could have for the night, so then they don't, they can slip away and they don't have to travel to wherever, so. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, any other concerns from?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just for one clarification, outdoor gatherings and event venues are two separate items.
Right.
So, it, from my understanding is we're not gonna be reviewing, like, the, uh. Bed and barns and those things, it's gonna be, there's the outdoor gatherings, which are, yeah, two separate items.
And it's basically that they get a permit over.
Five hundred.
Five hundred, that can be whatever they're doing.
Yep.
Anything else? Entertain a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, property supported, any discussion? Any votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign?
I could actually enjoy it, my dad can just.
That's, that's what he was.